Of the United States of America, Republic for which it stands, God indivisible, rest us for all.
Thank you. We will now call the role Mr. Bernlaw.
Commissioner Allen.
Present.
Commissioner Arnold.
Here.
Commissioner Pritchard.
Here.
Commissioner Slack.
Present.
Secretary Collins.
Here.
Vice President Moore.
Present.
President Hawkins.
Present. Thank you, Mr. Bernlaw. We will now move to the approval of tonight's agenda. Upon reviewing the agenda, are there any requests for changes to the agenda as presented? Have a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Set.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to section number two, special recognitions. There are not any special recognitions this month, so we'll move on to section three, opening comments. Does any commissioner wish to offer any opening comments this evening? Commissioner Arnold.
Thank you, President Hawkins. Tonight I ask my fellow commissioners to join me in remembering the eight individuals who lost their lives on April 15th in the FedEx tragedy. This horrific event touched our IPS family in several ways. An IPS parent injured, a beloved volunteer of our newcomer program lost, and the death of a vibrant recent graduate of George Washington High School. We grieve with the families, friends, and coworkers of those who lost their lives. We struggle to understand why these acts of violence continue to occur. We also look for ways to honor and celebrate the lives of those who were taken away from us. Each victim left behind family, friends, and acquaintances who now must move forward and cherish the memories they hold dear. Through the emotional and mental anguish, we also seek tangible ways to remember and honor those who were tragically taken away. The George Washington Dollars for Scholars Organization has helped hundreds of graduates achieve their enrollment goal. The organization will now add a Carley Smith Scholarship to honor the legacy of a young life lost. Carley wanted to learn about and become employed in business and finance. Her scholarship will allow other George Washington graduates to fulfill the dream that Carley was denied. Anyone who would like to support this effort is encouraged to donate. You can go to the George Washington Dollars for Scholars website to learn how to give. It is our hope that Carley's family will be part of the award presentation. In some small way, Carley's scholarship will allow other young George Washington graduates to become successful business professionals. With this effort, we honor her short life, we remember her vivacious spirit, and we pledge that she will be remembered. I now ask that we offer a moment of silence before we continue our agenda to honor all of the victims and their families. Thank you, President Hawkins.
Thank you, Commissioner Arnold, for that heartfelt reflection, and again, our condolences to the lives lost. Do any other commissioners have any opening comments they'd like to share this evening? So we'll move on to public comment, section 3.02 in the agenda. In order to minimize risk of exposure from members of the public sharing the same microphone at the podium, we will continue to receive public comment through our online portal. However, we're very excited that tonight we are able to restart in-person public comments. We recognize that for many in our community, this community, this has been a very long and difficult 14 months. We know that many of you have been waiting to address the board publicly. We thank you for your patience and are very happy to be able to hear your voices this evening. Please note that if you wish to provide public comment in person in future months, you will need to register on our website to attend and speak. The written public comment portal was activated on Tuesday, April 20th, and will remain open until 4:00 PM, or was open until 4:00 PM today. At this time, there were 17 written submissions, which are posted on Board Docs, again, on item, as item 3.02, and are available for review on Board Docs. We will now receive public comment from those individuals who have signed up to offer comments to the board this evening. I will remind our speakers that you are allowed three minutes to offer comments to the board. A timer will start when you begin, and I ask that you briefly conclude your remarks when you hear the timer go off. Comments should be directed to the board collectively, should not be abusive, disruptive, and should not address a topic that might be of confidential nature or that would compromise the impartiality of this board. I will also remind our speakers that while the board is happy to receive your comments, we will not respond or answer questions at this current time. Please come to the podium and begin your comments when your name is called. Mr. Bernlaw, please call the first speaker to the podium.
Charles Williams. Charles Williams. Dantia Dyson.
Hello, Superintendent Johnson, members of the IPS Commission. My name is Dantia Dyson. I am here, IPS parent, and I want to start by saying I am happy to be here speaking to you all in person. Before my daughter went to an IPS school, she was in a different district. It was a predominantly white school, and she didn't like it. Kids treated her very differently, and she didn't have any friends. This is one of the many reasons why I'm so happy to see the racial equity policy and Black Lives Matter resolution pass. As a part of the parent committee who wrote the vision for the more just equitable district and submitted it to you back in March, I hope that the plan to update the equity policy as well as the strategic plan to include our recommendations. While there are a lot of great things about IPS, not all schools are created equal, and not all schools are getting the same results for the black and brown kids. So even with the good intentions of these policies, there are discipline issues in these districts. Kids like mine shouldn't be at a greater risk for being suspended or expelled. Kids like mine should have teachers that they can relate to. I remember my first black teacher, and it had, and it had a huge difference in my life. This board needs to update the equity policy and strategic plans set clear and very specific goals for the growing number of teachers of color in the district. Kids like mine will benefit from it. I don't have a lot of issues with my daughter's school, but I see the district as a whole, and not every school is doing right by our kids. Please don't just read our documents, act on them. I want to see these policies passed and the strategic plan updated with clear goals that are trackable and transparent. I have a godchild also, who is in the third grade at Matchbook Learning. I want to see the referendum dollars shared with schools like this one. She attends. Innovation schools are still IPS schools. And not sharing referendum funding with these is just inequitable. Every school and every kid in the district will benefit from more and just, for more of the just and equitable system. Thank you for your time.
Elad Andrew Nichols Kaufman.
Good evening, IPS Board of Commissioners, Superintendent Johnson, and members of the IPS community. I'm Elad Nichols Kaufman. I'm a senior at Shortridge, and I'm here to speak in favor of adopting the Indigo Transportation for high school students. I participated in the pilot program for Indigo for, I guess, almost two and a half years now, and for me, it's been an extremely beneficial experience. It's allowed me to, a lot more flexibility, right? So I get to, if I miss the bus, I can catch the next bus. You know, you're not relying on only one, like the school bus. So, you know, students who have difficulty catching a ride can still get to school even if they're late. It's given me flexibility to go to clubs and, you know, before-school or after-school activities in ways that, you know, would not have been possible if I relied on a ride all the time. And it also has been a great help in participating in things out of school. I've been able to go down, for example, and speak at the State House one time. We've had club, we've had school groups go out and, you know, go to different places, experience different things, and see the city, thanks to partnership with Indigo. There's other reason that I think this is really valuable, is that it helps independent, create independence for high school students. You know, it's a big time, a big transition moving into high school, and being able to step out and say, you know, this little bit of freedom, this freedom is available to you, and you can go in the city, you are taking responsibility for getting there on time, right? You're responsible, not anyone else. You have to learn about that. That's a really important thing, you know, and students across the world, you know, Europe, Asia, and, you know, even in lots of cities in the United States do this. Now, I understand parents' concerns about safety, you know, sending, going out can be scary, you know, the world is a lot of scary things in the world if you just look out. But in the end, I feel Indigo's really safe. They have safety as one of their top priorities for riders. And I've had very positive experiences in all situations on Indigo. So I really hope that you consider for students, you know, keeping up the, expanding the Indigo ridership, and I think it forms a good alternative to school buses and, you know, helps make sure you're not cutting into actual schools. And thank you very much.
Lena Dickerson.
Good evening, Superintendent Johnson and IPS Board of Commissioners. My name is Lena Dickerson, and I'm a mother of three beautiful girls, two of which attend Ignite Achievement Academy. As a product of IPS, it is important to me to see this district grow and thrive, which is why I hope you will act on the plan for a more just and equitable IPS by adding bold goals to the district's strategic plan and racial equity policy. In order to provide equity for all scholars, we need to take a deep look into what is needed for them to have an equitable public equality, public education, which includes fairly funding all IPS schools, not only traditional ones. My daughters attend an innovation school that did not receive any funds from the operating referendum that was passed. I hope to see those funds benefit all IPS schools by the summer. The pandemic has caused the world to pause and reflect on many levels, so it is now time to revamp and rebuild our educational system. As IPS leaders, your actions can help maximize the movement and the moment. We have had to pivot in how we educate our scholars. This pandemic has highlighted the district shortcomings. The district has taken steps towards equity, but there is so much more work to be done. Collaboration with parents is essential to create smart goals and to create smart results. It is more than just returning emails and having roundtable discussions with parents, and I would love to be a part of those conversations. And it is more than conversations. It is the policies we need to, need you to pass, and the updates we need you to make for racial equity policy. I voted for some of you on this board because what you stood for in your campaign aligned with the mission and the values that our districts need. Now I'm calling you all to make good on what you said. I look forward to you all taking the necessary steps to make sure me and other parents are able to come along beside you and bring our vision of a just and equitable district to fruition. All of our children are important and deserve an equitable education. Let's do this together. Thank you.
Melissa Dam.
Hello, good evening. As everybody knows, my name is Melissa Dam. I'm an IPS 48 grandparent, and I want to see this district to be equitable. And I think for that to happen, grandparents, parents, guardians, and community members, they have to be involved. I was one of the parents who helped draft this vision for a more and just equitable IPS that you all received back in March. Now that, I hope you had time to read it, and I sincerely hope you plan to take action on it, it surprises me every day to know that not all of our children are receiving the same shot at success, all because of where they live. I advocate for school 48 to become an innovation school because I saw how it was struggling and how my grandchildren were struggling. Sorry. I want to see more successful school models repeated across the district with the intention, which means this board has to have a plan. For it has a community that will plan well with families. Please follow through on making sure IPS, every child, no matter where their zip code is, has a great school to go to. From where I stand, if we know what a model works well and has equitable outcome for kids, why wouldn't we adapt this into all of our schools? This year's been hard on all of us, but the students who are facing the greatest setbacks in achievement and opportunity due to the pandemic are the same students who are likely behind their peers before the pandemic began. Sorry, thirsty. I don't see any data about the opportunity gaps in the IPS strategic plan, but I hope to. I want the leaders in this room to make sure the strategic plan and the equity policy include the goals of increasing black and brown students' performance and outcomes by 300 and 200% respectively over the next five years or sooner. Equity is good for all of us. And as an involved grandparent who supports multiple students through their learning, I'm worried. I'm worried about my grandson with special needs. I'm worried about my granddaughter whose first language was Spanish. While she's doing great with speaking English now, I hope to see this board pass a language justice policy that ensures children who are learning English and children whose families speak multiple languages are supported. I'm worried about so many children in this district, which is why I hope you add our goals, the strategic plan, and equity policy. I know if you put a plan in action and work with parents and the community, our goals can create a better IPS. Thank you.
Shawanda Tyson.
Good evening, Superintendent Johnson and IPS Board Commissioners. My name is Shawanda Tyson, and I am an advocate, a single mother of an autistic child with ADHD and a five-year-old who just started kindergarten this year at Ignite Achievement Academy. I often work two or three jobs at a time to make ends meet and create a good quality of life for my boys. With all of this on my plate, I'm still here on a Thursday night for my boys and all the other babies in this district who deserve a quality education, who deserve an equitable education. I'm sorry. My children attend an innovation school. Is my kid's school not a part of the IPS family or not? If they are, like they, you guys say they are, we need to take care of these schools. I am aware that innovation schools have their own budgets, but if they are operating under IPS, they need to be receiving the referendum dollars that the other schools are getting too. They need their share of the dollars to continue educating our students of color and other students they serve inside of the building. I hope to see this district announce plans to share these dollars by the summer. Beyond equitably funding schools, there are families in this district who are left out of decisions because of language barriers. We have to be intentional about communication with all parents in this district, not just the ones who only speak English. Please work to pass a language justice policy. I am highly upset that only 27% of teachers in this district are black or brown. We need goals to improve this number so more teachers reflect the student population. I am highly upset that only 7% of black students pass the I-learn. We definitely need to have a plan to grow schools that don't have this opportunity gap. And overall, we need to ensure that within five to six years, black and brown students are doing just as well as white students, which means adding this goal to the strategic plan, I say, "we" because we are all a part of ensuring our students receive a quality education. This pandemic has brought to light the many gaps in equity in our district. I know for a fact, and you guys know for a fact, that our students did not receive the quality education that they deserve. So what are we going to do about it? How are we going to address learning loss? And our plan addresses these issues. We have an opportunity to change the path that our students are on. We have the opportunity to end systematic racism in our district. Our children need this board to step up and make the changes needed to end it. We're systematic racist. We know that this is an action plan with bold goals, but it takes bold goals to create bold outcomes for our children. Please add these goals to the district's strategic plan. Thank you.
Sheri Holmes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sheri Holmes, and I'm also an IPS parent. I'm really happy to be here in person today. As one of the parents who helped draft the vision for a more just and equitable IPS, I really hope the board not only reads it but acts on it. District-wide, students that look like mine are less likely to succeed, and I want to see a goal that ensures that that's not going to continue to happen. I hope to see the district's strategic plan and equity policy include a goal of increasing black and brown student performance and outcome over the next five to six years, if not sooner. Our plan calls for increasing proficiency rates for black students by 300% over the next six years. District-wide, children that look like mine are less likely to have teachers that they can relate to. This has to change. I want to see the equity policy and strategic plan set clear, specific goals for growing the number of teachers of color in the district. District-wide, non-English-speaking families are being left out of conversations and decisions. I want to see the board draft and vote to approve a language justice policy that shapes how school better support parents and students with language differences. District-wide, only some schools receive their share of referendum dollars. All schools in this district are IPS schools, and the funds should be distributed in a way where all schools are able to get what they need to succeed. I hope to see the board take action on sharing referendum dollars with innovation schools by the summer. District-wide, I believe there are mixed feelings on policing schools. I hope your work to get the communities' opinion of police-free schools and share the benefits and challenges of ending police presence in schools. I don't know, I'm sorry, I don't know what the answer should be, but I would like to know if the data shows the funds spent on police could better serve students by spending them on counselors and support services. If we keep policing schools, I hope they are properly trained to help students not grow, and schools not grow the school prison pipeline. I'm sorry, I'm getting a little emotional. Lastly, some schools are equally serving kids, which is why I know it is possible for the district to prove all students can achieve with the right support. I hope to see the board have a clear plan for duplicating schools that are working for kids like mine. My kids attend school IPS. A lot of IPS schools have gaps between white kids and black kids and brown kids on tests. The gap is smaller at school 87. Equity is really important to me, so closing the gap at all IPS schools is important to me also. But to close the gap, the board needs to have a timeline and goals for ensuring we have more models that are proven to work for the kids the district serves. Thank you for your time.
Lucille Ansel.
Hello, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. I am Lucille Ansel, and I'm doing a fifth-grade exhibition project on how the pandemic and social justice issues have affected schoolchildren's and teachers' mental health. Positive mental health is crucial to people's well-being and is just as important as physical health. However, there is a stigma around mental health. Due to this fact, people don't always seek the help they need. I interviewed Kristy Eaton, the Assistant Director of the IU Mental Health Initiative, and she said it impacts our daily functioning. If you have good mental health, it can positively impact your ability to focus, pay attention, get your homework done, and participate in class. If you are struggling with your mental health, it can make going to school really hard. The pandemic and social injustices have impacted students' mental health in a negative way. From March of 2020 to October of 2020, mental health-related emergency visits for kids ages 5 to 11 has increased 24%, and for kids ages 12 to 17, it rose 31%. It is not just students who are struggling. 2020 has also taken a large toll on teachers. The National Education Association found that 28% of educators considered leaving the profession due to the pandemic. People are struggling. We need to do something about it. I think one crucial thing we need to do is provide mental health education to every student in every grade every day. SEL needs to be an obvious part of the curriculum with its own designated time and name. This would help eliminate the stigma because we would not just teach it when conflicts arise or when it is buried in another topic. As a part of SEL learning, I think it would also be helpful to have peer groups and open classroom discussions about racial inequities and how we can be better allies to one another. I love the Say Their Names Toolkit, and it would be great if we could see it in every classroom. I applaud IPS for the mental health work you have already done and the support staff within schools. However, 2020 has hurt students so much that we will need to think outside the box and provide more mental health education and support to students. Another thing to consider is allowing mental health days to be an excused absence. I interviewed Senator Fatty Kedora, and he said I interviewed Senator Fatty Cudora, and he said that students have a full-time job and deserve the break that they need. I recall my mom letting me take the day off, and I went back to school refreshed and ready to learn. We still need to use these mental health days carefully, though. Students could use them to isolate themselves, which could make them feel worse. When not misused, and if we allow just a few, mental health days can be a great thing. And of course, we cannot forget about our heroic teachers, who are already stretched so thin. However, yoga classes and seminars aren't going to help enough. Teachers need time, energy, support, and not to mention a raise. Please consider taking a survey of all the teachers in the district, asking how they would feel supported. And please use the power you have to fight for an increase in pay for teachers and the mental health resources of teachers, considering all they do for us. Thank you so much for listening, and please take my ideas about expanding mental health education in classrooms, excusing mental health days, and supporting pay increases for teachers into consideration. Thank you.
Christina Smith.
Good evening, Commissioners. I understand and agree that IPS and you as a school board have a lot of difficult decisions to make, especially when it comes to saving money. As a parent of a sixth and eighth grader, I've seen firsthand how the reduction in programs, field trips, loss of teachers, and funding affect students and classrooms. Being a parent and a taxpayer, I have several issues with the proposed transportation plan. The first being, why is this decision being proposed and voted on after high school selections for next year have already been made? As a parent of an incoming ninth grader, if I would have known that my child may not have yellow bus service throughout high school, it would have changed our decision on which high school to attend. As it stands, the first round of IPS lottery is over. Private and out-of-district transfer applications are past due. If my child has to ride an Indigo bus in order, or I have to drive them to school, there's no incentive for me to choose IPS as a school district. The starting criteria for high school is no transfers. If this changes in the future to one, two, three, multiple transfers, will the board have to vote to approve those changes? Third, as a parent, I have major safety concerns with Indigo stops. In the past week of loan, we've been keeping track on our Citizen app. We've had multiple police runs and ambulance runs to the two major stops along Washington Street by our house. We've also seen firsthand adults congregating at all hours of the day and evening, hanging out, drinking, fist fighting, openly using street drugs, including heroin needles, and a dead body at an Indigo bus stop by our house. These are all things that high school students would have to endure at bus stops, let alone walking through that alone is bad enough, but in order to stay there and wait for a bus, that's a lot to put on a 14-year-old kid. If IPS knew that there were funding and cash flow issues in the district, why does it continue to add innovation schools and provide services like transportation for free? Let's remember, the funding doesn't change for these services based on the number of students in IPS that's being served. IPS also needs to make public the actual full cost of running the Office of Innovation in IPS. This would include time spent at board meetings, preparing presentations, contracts, lawyer fees, et cetera, and innovation schools need to be charged the actual costs of running this department. As a taxpayer, I voted to increase, an increase for my taxes in the IPS referenda. I know exactly what was driving, I want to know exactly what is driving up costs and by how much. What are the actual costs per child on the bus per route? If IPS knows that autonomy for innovation schools on start-stop times in calendar year is increasing costs, why is that continuing to be allowed? If these schools want to do that, then they should utilize their additional state funding to cover those differences. IPS should also be looking at innovation schools that receive services from IPS like building, utility, food service, transportation, et cetera, and also the state charter school grant of $1,000 per student per year and have them pay the actual costs of those services. Are all schools receiving transportation through IPS High School, through IPS included in these changes? The policy doesn't list schools and just states that those covered by the policy. If IPS decides to take money from the Education Fund to cover the Operation Fund again, which oversees buses, will all schools within IPS be affected equally? Previously, when IPS took $2 million from the Education Fund, this only affects schools who utilize student-based allocation. Not all schools, since most innovation schools don't use that. As a taxpayer, I'm also wondering why there haven't been drastic cuts in central office staff based on the fact that nearly 50% of IPS schools aren't run by IPS anymore. I also find it interesting that none of you up there, and probably very few in the audience, actually took an Indigo bus to get here tonight. You probably didn't take an Indigo bus yesterday, or the day before, or even this week. I encourage you all to take the walking routes and bus routes that you're asking your students to take. Until you are willing to do exactly what you're asking young children to do and address the very real safety concerns and other issues, please hold off on moving forward. Thank you.
Irma Perdomo. Irma Perdomo. Amabala Afaloyan. Amabala Afalayan. Swantella Nelson. Swantella Nelson. Mary Beth Mullins. Mary Beth Mullins.
Thank you, Mr. Burnler, and thank you to all the public commenters this evening, as well as our students who offered public comment as well. Thank you for your advocacy. Having received opening comments from the board and the public, we will now proceed to the consent agenda. Section four. Section four items included on the consent agenda were reviewed at our recent Agenda Review Session on Tuesday and reflect all necessary modifications. Are there any questions or requests to be removed? Is there any, are there any questions or requests to remove any items from the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
No, moved. Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion or comment? Mr. Burnler, please call the roll.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Commissioner Arnold.
Yes.
Commissioner Pritchard.
Yes.
Commissioner Slack.
Yes.
Secretary Collins.
Yes.
Vice President Moore.
Yes.
President Hawkins.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Burnler. Motion carries. Moving on to section five of the agenda, the Finance Committee update. We will now hear from our Finance Chair, Commissioner Slack, with an update from Finance Committee. The committee met on April 13th. Commissioner Slack.
Thank you, President Hawkins. On Tuesday, April 13th, 2021, the Finance Committee met. Weston Young facilitated and reviewed a discussion of the financial reporting update. The 2020 to 21 financial outlook was reviewed. The federal stimulus dollars, the legislative updates, financial sustainability of IPS, the tax base analysis, and cash flow analysis was also discussed. Jason O'Neill and Policy Analytics presented the legislative scenario overview to review how school funding determinations made in the legislative impacts IPS. Baker Tilly provided a review of the district's cash flow management update. Dr. Warren Morgan, Chief Academic Officer for IPS, provided the academics update. Zach Mahone, Executive Director of Operations, provides the update on the planned transportation incentives being presented to IPS tonight. And that was the brief overview. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Slack. Additionally, the Audit Committee met this month on April 23rd. I chaired that committee, so I'd be happy to provide an update. So I'm very pleased to report that through the hard work of Weston Young and his team and partners from BKD, our CPA firm and advisors, we now have in hand our very first approved GAAP audit. This is an audit that is required to issue bonds as well. And while, and while it is now required, while it is, while it is now required of all Indiana school districts, we are one of nine to have completed such audit. So great work to all of, that, that put this into place and all your efforts along this journey. The audit was approved by the Audit Committee last week and is available on Board Docs for review. Finally, I want to note that IPS is, again, one of the only, the one and only school system and district to engage with an outside CPA firm to complete the annual audit. Most school districts are only audited on a biannual basis, and all but a few are audited by the Indiana State Board of Accounts. We're very appreciative of the partnership and the role of the third-party CPA fulfills in aiding IPS in achieving this unique milestone. And again, I just want to reiterate that the audit is posted on Board Docs.
President Hawkins, I just have a question. Can I ask that?
Commissioner Moore, I'm, Commissioner Arnold, excuse me, yes.
I know that in the past, Finance Committee meetings have been open to the public, and we've always invited. What is that procedure now with the COVID restrictions? Are people still allowed to come? Can you just clarify that? Because I know there are people who are concerned about the way we spend money, and they are, these meetings are open to the public.
They are. Now that we've shifted back to in-person comment for Finance Committee, we'll be able to align that as well. Weston, I'm not sure when the next committee meeting is scheduled for. Thank you.
We do not have it scheduled. My understanding that the meeting we had in this, this past month was open to the public and available.
Yes, it was. So moving forward, though, we'll be sure that's clear and folks know how to make sure they know the protocols for attendance.
Thank you.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes, just a quick question. On our audit, it was a clean audit, right?
Yes.
That, that does make a difference.
That does make, thank you for clarifying that as our, as our resident CPA on the, on the IPS School Board, Commissioner Moore. Thank you for that. Again, so any, any other, any other questions or discussion or comments regarding the Finance Committee and Audit Committee? All right, well, excellent. Well, thank you again. And having completed board reports, I now turn the agenda over to Superintendent Johnson for superintendent reports.
Great, thank you, President Hawkins. There are three items in superintendent's reports this month. Item 6.01, our school spotlight, was shared on Tuesday, and I want to again thank Principal Parham for coming and sharing about the great work happening at Paul Miller School 114. She had a little crowd there as well, so I'm very thankful for the folks from her team who came out to support her Tuesday evening. Our next item, item 6.02, is our Quarterly Finance Update, and I will turn it over to Weston Young, Chief Financial Officer, for that presentation at this time.
Thank you, Superintendent Johnson. Good evening, Commissioners. It's that time of year where we're going to review the third quarter of our school year, our fiscal year. It is also a time that I think is fitting to review how we're doing as a, as a district, look at our financial landscape, as many of us are, are opening up property tax bills and seeing percentages and increases on those tax rates. And want to make sure that this information is readily available for people to review and, and see how we're doing and what we're using the dollars for. They can click on the link at the bottom of the screen here and go to our website with many, many reports available to them to find out more. For the first nine months of the school year, we started out with $96 million in our board appropriated funds, our education operations, operating referendum fund. Over the course of the year, we've, we are running a deficit due to the fact that the property taxes that are received semiannually, this is one of those, those middle quarters where we do not have that revenue. We project at the end of the year, which is two slides from now, about $99 million in the bank. So that, that net, that net $3 million or so on our, on our board appropriated funds is basically a break even, but then when we look at the COVID response that has happened this school year, about a $15 million deficit. So with the COVID response anticipated and potentially not getting the reimbursements from the state on the, on our first SRR1, before then, we're conservatively looking at about an $81 million balance at the end of this fiscal year. That represents about a two-year, two-month cash reserve at that time. Going back one slide, want to highlight the nine months, the breakdown of expenditures based in some, some high-level categories. You can see there the prior year year-to-date, the budgeted year-to-date for the school year, and then the year-to-date actual. A couple of areas I would highlight are, one, the alignment to the budget fairly tight when it comes to nine months into the school year, but the transportation fund expenditures, this is primarily due to the timing and the billing of the, the transportation services done by our new contractor. We see that being fully paid out for the course of the 12 months at the, at 6:30. The other item I would, I would highlight is just the, the green section, the innovation network of payments, up from budget, up from prior year. If you remember last, last year, there was a lot of transition, a lot, a lot of new schools. We, we had received a turnaround of schools back, but those innovation agreements passed, and most of them, after the budget was set. That's the reason for the increase there. And then also you see the special ed and gen ed funds. When we look at the, the decrease in enrollment that has happened across the district over the course of this school year, we, we have managed our, our, our school budgets appropriately when, when there's vacancies, when there's, you know, hiring, there's, there's, there's those elements of lowering, lowering the expense at our schools, and that's represented in the gen ed funding there. When we look at all funds, the, the key critical number that I'm looking at as CFO is just for cash flow, is that, that $62 million number at the bottom of the 2021 column. That $62 million represents a, a need for cash flow across all of our funds when we don't have operating, the property tax dollars coming in, in, in the, in the March timeframe. So that, that just shows you the amount of cash we need to have in reserves to, to weather, weather the, the typical school year. When we look at our balances, at, at 331, we show about $127 million in, in our, our, our bank. You see the operations, CPF, transportation funds, those are dipped down in the, in the, in the March timeframe due to the semi-annual payments not being received. Supply diversity, this is, we're starting a new, a new tracking for a new calendar year, year over year, 6%, 6% last year, 7% this year for the, for the quarter. This is for three months of spend. This is cash basis, this is, you know, the timing of, of events. Couple of the areas that we are spending dollars in considerably are related to our work with the CAP referendum and the work done at our, in our buildings, then also some of the IT build-out that we've done with devices and our infrastructure. But I do note that we are taking a look at, at the, the outreach with minority vendors. We've, we've, we've formed relationships with two alliances, affinity groups focused on black businesses, and so we're excited to have those in conversation with our team, our procurement team, and engaging hopefully for, for future engagement and, and, and spend in the future. For 2021, again, highlighting, this, this has been a year where we've shifted to one-to-one. We've implemented social distancing in so many ways, and then launching the virtual learning and learning hubs. That was a big, big lift, and so that's, that's what we've done in 2021. The, the items related to funding that I want to update you on during this school year that impact some of the work that we're doing, planning as a, as a team, but also for this school year, first is the federal funding. You know, since I last talked with you, right, right after I talked with you, the budget, the public hearing in March, the third federal stimulus package was passed. And so more information about the federal stimulus, I guess I have to call them stimuli, are in the appendix. Each one is kind of detailed out of the, the amounts, and then also there's a summary page talking about every one of the LEAs, the corporations that are associated for IPS students in that, in that appendix as well. Second item is on state funding. Up until March and early April, without the, the passage of legislation in the state budget session, it was not certain that our kids that were virtual for some portion of this year were going to be funded at 100%. And so what we were raising in, in September, October timeframe, December, March timeframe, that has, that has solidified in all the, all the dollars that we were expecting to get for students of IPS, we will receive. So that's something that the legislative session, you know, completed for us. As, as noted in the Audit Committee report, we do have a financial audit that is completed. This is a big milestone. There's been quarterly finance updates over the years where I've taken the time to talk about all the financial reporting pieces that we do, but I want to highlight, this is a huge endeavor, and I, and I want to highlight three, three areas. One is, it increases the transparency for stakeholders. One, it's on an annual basis. Most school districts are not audited on an annual basis. That's crazy to me, but that's the fact. Second of all, Indiana is the last state to require a GAAP financial statement of some kind by their, by their government entities. That's, that's, that is not acceptable to me as a CPA. That is, that is not the standard, but we are at the standard now, and that's what we've been shooting for, for five, five, six years. shooting for for five, six years. But the transparency that I want to highlight for the stakeholders is that in the final pages of the report, we have a supplemental schedule where all the innovation schools, innovation in LEA, innovation non-LEA, are listed, their assets, their liabilities, their net equity, the revenues and expenditures. Is it in detail to that degree? No, but it's compiled across almost 20 schools, all in one spot. And if somebody from the media, from the outside, yourself, say, hey, where can I go to get it all in one spot? Click on that link. That's the one spot I have. And obviously, there's drill downs we can do, but that is the first time, as a CFO for IPS, I have one place that's been looked at by third-party people and consolidated in one spot. That's a huge piece for us as a district. The second thing is we're able to issue debt. It's a requirement to issue debt in Indiana to have a GAAP statement. We're one of nine districts that has a requirement. We're able to do that for our kids, innovation, non-innovation. We're able to do that. We also are able to align with the expected reporting standards of the boundary agencies because of the GAAP statement. When we went through the rating call with Moody's this past March, we are rating held. It would not have held, it would have been downgraded a couple notches because we would not have had GAAP financials. So again, the ability for us to invest in GAAP statements is going to have a ripple effect in the tax rates and the debt and the interest rates that our taxpayers pay. I want to associate that. The work that we did is going to lower taxes for people today and tomorrow and the next day when we are trusted with GAAP financial statements. Looking ahead to 2022, we talked at length about this in the budget conversations we had, but I want to highlight a couple of things. Now, looking at what happened in the legislative session. During legislative session in our state, the federal allocations were taken into account when they were looking at state allocations. Okay, so just realize when we're talking about ESSR and we're talking the federal stimulus, those dollars impacted decisions about what state would allocate to districts. The state funding, very, very improved because of the revenue forecast that was delivered late in the session. Very, very pleased to see that revenue forecast. It is a forecast, it's based on assumptions, okay? Revenue is not there yet, it's the plan of the state. The increases that IPS will receive over the next two years in total is about 6.2%. The Indiana average is a little over nine. And then what we are also highlighting is that in the local funding space, the property tax space, IPS advocated and involved ourselves in conversations with legislators to talk about, hey, let's talk about and study the charter school, you know, the funding mechanisms that are in place. And so we see ourselves aligned, we have data, we do it, and we collaborate with those schools, we have information, and we're looking for that seat at the table to share what we do. And lastly, what we've been highlighting is $18 million of spending reductions to address our long-term structural deficit, and we'll review that in a little bit. Couple other items in the legislative session I want to highlight. Lot of work, lot of talk about changing or looking at the definition of complexity. Nothing was done on it. However, we've advocated strongly for increased spending in SPED and ELL. We've highlighted those huge gaps in spending versus the revenue we get. That's not an IPS thing, that's across the state. But there was an increase in SPED and ELL funding. Doesn't close the gap, but it's a move in the right direction, and we're pleased with that. Again, highlighted the study of charter school funding and the utilizations of buildings. Looking, and we've highlighted the virtual funding. Next year, if there is virtual students, they will be funded at the lower amount. So that's, it was a one-time, hold harmless for districts. Next year, that will not be the case. Another item with flexibility is $150 million. So we have all this ESSR federal stimulus, but the state has put aside $150 million for competitive grants of districts to be funded for student learning recovery. And then we advocated for an ADM hold harmless. Remember, our enrollment had dipped from the prior year. We're advocating for a hold harmless. That did not take effect. This is a slide in very similar form you've seen through the budget process, highlighting the movement of our total, in the blue, student funding per pupil. The orange represents the foundation amount, and the gray represents the complexity. Foundation for all students, the same amount, complexity based on need, based on the district. What we want to highlight with that shift at the end of the legislative session, as over the course of the last decade, this is a systemic gradualism of movement from complexity to foundation. And so in 2013, 14, about 32% of our funding was based on a complexity, based on need. About 1% a year has gradually, slowly gone to foundation, and the move towards equal funding versus equitable funding is continued. This is something that if you're an analyst, you can depend on this. This is pretty much what you can expect. What that has caused is, over the course of that same decade, about $434 of growth in our funding, at the same time at the cost of $1,281 going to the foundation, again, going to all students, but then the decrease of $847 a student less in complexity. What that means for us in a percentage term over that timeframe, again, when we were talking in the House budget and things like that earlier in February and March, there was a break even over the course of the time. Again, the difference in that final conference committee is a 6% increase over that timeframe. So 6% from 13, 14 till two years from now, 6% increase. That same Indiana average or a similarly situated HSE, for example, is up 21% during that time. What that means for IPS across, you know, different sizes of schools, different parts of the state, you can see the heat map there, looking at the line, the volume budget. IPS at 6.2%, you can see most school districts up 7% to 10%. And so again, very much pleased with an increase, but relative to other districts and surrounding districts, losing that competitive opportunity to compete for talent, purchasing power is lost. That one education spending goal that we worked very, very hard on and advocated for, and we will continue to advocate for, is for that additional allocation based on need of students, not to all students. The $18 million reductions that we are executing, we've highlighted in December, the reductions related to this SBA pool and the strategic reserve. This is something that we allocated to the schools in January, and the schools have been working through those allocations over the course of the last three or four months. Central Services, we've been looking at the contracts we have, we've been looking at the software licenses we've had. We've done a lot of investment to improve the operations, and those are actually starting to play out very well. There's also some reorganizations of departments that have been executed and will be in effect for the beginning of school year. And then Transportation, which is on the budget for tonight, an estimated about $5 million. We've had this kind of as a hold slide for, you know, just highlighting the decisions that are happening, some for us that we're impacted by, but also those that we have agency for, that we can enact ourselves. And a couple of the items that we're highlighting tonight are in that development stage. Those have been there for quite a while, but this is the time when action is being sought. So scaling those transportation initiatives and talking about the central office budget This slide is an updated slide. The blue line is our cash balance for education operations, operating referendum, and our federal stimulus funds. So people are asking, so you're getting all the money on federal stimulus, isn't that going to help? So again, trying to put it all together on one slide, how does that impact us? The blue line is what we presented to you during the budget presentation. So that was our plan, our projection at that time. Based upon the state increases in the legislative session, you see the orange line. So we've been a two-year budget cycle, we've moved our cash balance one year. So that's a positive, right? The green line is those state increases plus the impact of the $18 million in reductions if they're sustained, okay? So blue is the budget that we presented, orange what the impact is from the state legislature decision, and then the green, the state legislature decision, plus the $18 million in cuts. So the decisions, there's two decisions I see on this page. One is $18 million in cuts. We need to enact those, we need to keep those sustained. The second is, on the far right of the slide, there's, it's a dash line and a solid line. The solid line is what is, it's what will happen without action. The dash line is the, either renewal of the operating referendum at the current rate or the impact, the expiration of that operating referendum. So the solid line is the expiration. There will be action needed to do, whether it be renew a referendum or to enact additional savings initiatives or create revenue in other sources. So acting earlier and continuous intervention, we will stabilize the financial landscape of our district. All the while, the next three or four years, taking in over $200 million into our LEA and almost 300 across all of the schools that our students are in. And, you know, planning, patiently planning, and then executing is what Dr. Morgan is doing with the investment in student learning. The individual school leaders are working on those investments to adjust the short-term and long-term needs of our students. We have the shift to virtual learning, that is something that is here to stay, and the need to invest in our infrastructure on the IT side is important. It's a big piece of our planning. And then also, third, our facilities. What is it that our facilities need for future, you know, long-term sustainability and also the modernization of some of our central controls? The piece there is planning with the community, so there will be opportunities to inform the process, and then also we're working on a way to display in an external fashion the tracking of our spend of the ESSR dollars all the way through the years. Key messages being that federal stimulus funds that provide that one-time support and that we are working on those return-to-school plans for next school year, learning acceleration to happen this summer and in the future years, that state tuition support was increased, there's been increases in SPED and ELL. At the same time, we're going to advocate for our kids to increase that funding over the long term. And amidst these one-time federal stimulus and state funding increases, the district's long-term financial sustainability is really critical, that action is taken and we sustain our cost reduction strategies. So that's what I have for this quarter and open for any questions.
Weston, thank you for the presentation. Open the floor up to Commissioners for questions. Mr. Young, Commissioner Arnold, I'm sorry, Commissioner Moore.
Thank you, Weston, for the presentation. I want to say that I was probably one of the people that was uncertain whether or not I thought that school districts should go to GAAP basis financials, but I'm glad to know that we were able to make that big turn, and I'm very impressed and very happy to see that you led that effort. Also, I wanted to talk about the financial statements being cumulative, that our financial statements also show those fundings of those innovation schools, where we have received many, I've received many contacts from individuals wanting to know how much money were those innovation schools receiving, how much money were there flowing for their children. I did not think, I was one of the people who did not think we were going to get our financials done because of the fact that we had to pull in so many innovation schools. So that's a big kudo for you also. But I also want to make sure that everyone knows that they need any information as relates to the innovation, the amount of funds that they're going, amount of funds that they received in the past, was it, we have a two-year audit, right? Is it about?
First year of transition is just a one-year.
Okay, so at least they could find out what they had last year and be able to compare, you know, what IPS have and what those other schools have. So I want to make sure everyone's aware of that. And you said it's on the link on the board docs right at the bottom of your presentation. So if you click on that link, people will see that. So I have a couple, so I promise I'm going to hurry up. Okay, so am I correct that the $18 million that we have as a deficit is part of what we were supposed to, it was created based on the fact that we were supposed to find X number efficiencies over a period of time? Is that correct? When we went out for the referendum? Remember, we got referendum dollars, then they said we had to have efficiencies that equaled the total amount of money we were supposed to have within IPS that we would have additional funding. Is that $18 million contributable to the efficiencies that we're supposed to be getting over this period of time? That's my first question.
$18 million for next year is due to enrollment.
Due to enrollment? It has nothing to do with the efficiency that we have to, that we had, that we had to be able to find in order to meet our balanced budget? So it's due to the fact that our student enrollment has gone down? Okay.
Yes, and it's related to the referendum in that the teachers that, the school leaders and teachers that are teaching kids, but less kids, got on average 9% raises two years ago and 5% this year. And so sustaining that over time, one, we need to have enrollment, two, we have to make sure that our revenue is at a rate that is at par with what we give on raises. At some point, that math is not going to work out in the long run unless revenue continues to increase or reductions in costs exist.
Okay, so we either got to find efficiencies, or we got to get more children, or we're going to continue to have the downward spiral that we're going right now in addition to the efficiency we had, that we had to find in order to be able to be solid going forward? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we could potentially have a double whammy. Reductions due to the number of children, plus the money we got to find for the efficiencies that's supposed to cover the loss that we anticipate we're going to have in the beginning. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Arnold.
I know that's not part of the presentation, but can you just give us a real quick update and overview on SBA and the work that's been done and how we're balancing and how we're continuing to move in that direction?
Yeah, so with student-based allocation, SBA, we have allocated resources to schools since 2017, 18 school year, with three goals, one, equity, transparency, and flexibility. So equitable distribution being based on the poverty of the student and then also the ELL weight associated with that student population. The transparency is that every one of the principals should be able to calculate that themselves based upon the formula we have, knowing the student population. The flexibility is where IPS, I think, is unique, because a lot of times people have weighted student formulas, but they don't just allocate dollars and say, hey, you choose. It's a district-led planning arrangement. So my partners, whether it be Jamie Vandewali or Natalie Henderson, they can maybe share more in-depth on what some of the shifts are that are happening. But I think what has happened in the last January through, you know, March, April timeframe is that schools have seen that, one, we did not adjust them in the fall this past year for the reduction in enrollment that we all experienced. And so that gap that we have in funding this year is because we held everybody harmless, held them harmless, both on the innovation LEA side and the non-LEA side, in the traditional sense. But when it comes to the decisions that are made this year, it's an element of where, you know, the vacancy or the resource that is, that was desired in maybe a year before with the limited use of dollars, you know, key critical decisions had to be made, and those are what are being enacted here the next two or three, two or three months by the end of the school year.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any additional questions for Mr. Young? Commissioner Pritchard?
Okay, thank you. I just want to say, Weston, I know we've talked about this before, but, you know, that, I'll first add a question. So did you say you were going to be doing an audit every year or every other year?
We do an audit every year.
Every year, okay. I thought earlier it said every other year. You know, that accomplishment of achieving the audit, converting to GAAP basis is really important, so I want to thank you for doing that and hope everyone acknowledges, you know, all the work and the effort that went into that and understand, like you said earlier, how that will enable us to qualify for lower rates potentially in the market, which will help us achieve some of the non-financial goals in the strategic plan. So I think that's really important, so thanks for doing that. And also for regards to the ESSR funding, including the community and making those decisions and the tracking tool, because this is a really important opportunity, we have a lot of funds, so, you know, I think that's a great effort to keep the community engaged in that process. And... And the last thing I wanted to say is, thank you for also communicating clearly in a lot of your materials, the inequities that exist in the state and that when it comes to funding and the complexity index. I think that's really important and I'm glad that IPS is taking the lead, although it is somewhat self-serving, but I'm glad that IPS is taking the lead at communicating how blatant that inequity is. So thanks for your efforts on all of those.
You're welcome. It's a team, team effort.
Commissioners, any questions? All right, well, again Weston, thank you for the presentation and I want to echo all my colleagues, especially, you know, reflecting upon the gains certainly in special education and ELL funding, but the complexity component is very disappointing. And I know you and your team and Superintendent Johnson and Legislative Affairs were, it was a roller coaster ride this session and you all rode and rode and rode and rode that, that car. And so in spite of the increase, which is statewide out of the forecast that was released a week or two ago, that's great. But, you know, fundamentally equity was not achieved in this session. So again, I want to appreciate each of you for your efforts along that journey. You know, I think the other piece is, is going back to the federal funds and, you know, I truly do, I certainly agree that this is an incredible opportunity for us to, as a board and as a school community, to engage our community. You know, this, these, these resources that we're seeing from the federal government and per President Biden's State of the Union address, you know, he's laser focused on, on these inequities and he's laser focused on K-12 education, which is incredible, particularly from that, that seat in the White House. And this is a great opportunity for us to listen, learn, receive that feedback from our community, which doesn't happen very often in the sense of these types of resources coming to school system. This is once in a century opportunity perhaps where we see these resources coming in. So again, I'm very excited about the opportunity that we have to engage. I love the, the transparency accountability of a tracker. That's excellent and just look forward to the next step.
Great, thank you Commissioners. Thank you Weston for the presentation this evening. Our next item, item 6.03 is an update from Stephanie Bailey, who serves as Executive Director of the IPS Foundation. We're very fortunate and very appreciative of the partnership we have with the foundation. And so I will welcome her to the podium at this time.
Good evening Superintendent Johnson and Commissioners. It is a pleasure to be with you again this evening and to have the opportunity to share the progress that we've been making at the IPS Foundation. So I want to begin by thanking you for giving us time on the agenda to continue to update you on what's happening. So for those who may be in the audience, or I'm sure the throngs of people watching on Facebook tonight, who may not be familiar with the IPS Foundation, I thought I would begin with just a real quick overview of who we are and what it is that we do. So the foundation secures private financial support to ensure that the dollars are available to move forward the strategic priorities of the district. That financial support could come from corporations, large or small, could come from foundations, local or national, and certainly we are also always appreciative of the donations we get from individual donors. All of this work, surely it's about raising money, but ultimately it is about ensuring that our IPS students have the support they need to pursue their dreams with purpose. So how do we go about doing that? When I first arrived about three years ago now, we had some discussion, we put a stake in the ground that the work that the foundation did was going to be exclusively focused on raising dollars connected to the strategic priorities. And I would be remiss if I did not stop for just a second here and thank Superintendent Johnson and her team, because as we talked about this vision of the foundation playing a different and more strategic role, we knew that it all hinged on whether or not we could truly become part of the team. And so I thank her and my district colleagues for welcoming us to the table and for including us in conversations, for ensuring that we've got a really good vision of where the district is going. That enables us to articulately share and convey the story in a way that has inspired many folks to join us and make an investment. So we take that story out to the community, to business leaders, to philanthropists and talk to them about what the gaps are that we need to fill to ensure our students and staff have what they need to be successful. Our work doing this enables all of you to remain focused on what you all do best, which is drive positive student outcomes. We don't need you worry about filling out grant reports or having coffees with donors, although we're happy to always have you come along with us. We'll take on that work to then raise those dollars that we can deploy into the district. Once the dollars are received, it's our responsibility to monitor and to manage those grant dollars, ensuring that they get sent into the programs that the donor intended for them to be invested in. And then of course, that we're reporting and managing the dollars appropriately. So I wanted to talk just a little bit tonight about, you've heard us visit multiple times about, we're going to raise dollars in association with the strategic plan. We've talked over the past few months about specific grants. We've talked about specific dollars and I thought tonight it would be good because we're really starting to see the traction in this area to just give you a few examples of how the fundraising lines up with the strategic priorities. So I'm going to talk you through a couple of programs that we've raised dollars for. This list is not intended to be comprehensive. It's just a few examples. We don't have time tonight for the whole list, which is a good problem to have. So when we think about strategic plan and priority area number one, increased access to rigorous instruction and curriculum, probably the area, not probably the area, that we have received the most interest so far, as well as most dollars invested, has all been around college and career readiness. So ensuring that the pathways in the high schools that you heard Jen O'Shea and Dr. Morgan speak about a couple of months ago are the right pathways for our students, ensuring that there are high-quality work-based learning experiences. Lots of investment in that area. We've also been very proud to provide funding for social and emotional wellness, training and programs, both for students and for teachers. And then certainly this past year, as teachers had to take on the responsibility of very quickly pivoting to teaching via technology, we were proud to provide dollars through our Education Equity Fund for professional development specifically for e-learning during that transition. When we take a look at strategic priority number two and think about what's the work that we could do to come alongside the district and be equally as committed to your goal of promoting racial equity? We're pleased to share that we've invested in racial equity training for staff. We were the sponsor of the Racial Equity Summit. And then also you may recall last month, you heard from Dr. Payne and Sean about the results of the PROMISE 54 study that was done across the staff. We are happy to say that we supported that work through our partnership with Salesforce. Moving down to strategic priority area number three, fostering authentic engagement. When you hear from the district team and get the results, talking about what students and their families say about their school experience, engagement with their school and their perceptions of the district, that tool that is used to capture all that data panorama has been supported by the foundation. So we're happy to contribute to that area as well. Last but not least, when we think about strategic priority area four, operate and fund strategically, of course, we internally have the exact same goal, right? How do we ensure that the foundation is operating and funded strategically so that we can be sustainable and provide the resource, resources for you? Happy to say that we've been able to do that very well the last couple of years as we've built the business. But we also jumped in and were able to provide internet hotspots. And then the last bullet point, probably the most exciting to me, is how do we transition the foundation from a place where you're getting $50,000, $100,000 a year to, hey, we can look out over the next three or four or five years and we can commit to the district that a level of funding in the millions is going to be regularly available from the foundation to support your priorities? So the next slide is probably my favorite because we've been working very diligently and here's the forecast for what's going to happen. So what I'm showing you on this slide here are philanthropic investments that the foundation is committed based on the dollars we've raised to investing in the district. This is not what I hope we raise. This is dollars for which I actually either already have the money in the bank or have a signed grant agreement. So the exciting news is that as time goes on and we continue this work, these numbers are only going to continue to go up. So I remember being here two and a half years ago, one of my first meetings and describing this vision for this strategic partnership and I really believe we can create a foundation that can be relied upon to raise multiple millions of dollars. And I'm pretty sure that people smiled and nodded and said, that's great. I'm sure some folks thought, hmm, that'd be awesome, but it kind of sounds like a pipe dream. And I'm really, really proud to share with you tonight that the pipe dream has been transformed into a reality in a very predictable stream of dollars that you can depend on. And our intention is just that every time I come back, this number continues to grow even larger. I wanted to spend just a couple of moments on the Education Equity Fund because every time I've been here since we entered the pandemic, you all have graciously inquired about what is the status of that fund? So to date, we have raised about $750,000. That's in three key areas. Rapid response, most of this money has been deployed to offer small micro grants. Teachers, principals, school-based leaders, central services staff can apply. We open the round multiple times a year and they can apply for $1,000 to do a project, to buy supplies, to provide a resource that without this, it just simply wouldn't be available. So so far we've invested $80,000. We just closed a recent round and I cut a whole pile of checks at the end of last week, which is always fun. That was another $20,000 last month. So $80,000 total. When we think about e-learning, this is the area of the Education Equity Fund where there's been the most investment into the districts. We've invested about $400,000. That has come primarily from two specific programs, the Wi-Fi hotspots that I had mentioned a little bit earlier, and then also the professional development for teachers for e-learning as they transition to using Apple devices for our youngest students. And last but not least, we have the recovery and return area of the fund. This hasn't been tapped quite as much yet, but we anticipate in the fall, we hope, right? Everybody is back, all in the rooms together. We know that there are going to be needs that come up and the idea of this fund is that the dollars are sitting there, they're very quickly able to be deployed so that as the district identifies needs, all they have to do is pick up the phone and call me, we get it approved by our board and we can make an investment to close that immediate short-term gap. So where are we going next? I want to close with just giving you a little bit of an idea of what will happen next. We certainly will continue to partner with IPS leadership, understanding what dollars do you need to close the gap on strategic plan initiatives? How do we take all that into context? We know that there's federal funding available, but there's still going to be gaps, particularly as we think about sustaining the district. So we want to continue to come alongside of you all and help close those gaps. Right now, we're working with Andrew and Dr. Payne to look ahead on racial equity training, what will be the plan and could we perhaps bring philanthropic dollars to support those efforts, which I believe we can. We'll continue to build relationships. I do not have a magic fundraising wand that I carry around to make all this happen. The truth of the matter is, is this is built by getting to know people in the community, being able to articulately tell the story of the district, to cast a vision and to inspire people to make investments and we'll continue to do that work. We will also, as I just spoke about, provide nimble COVID relief. When something comes up, smaller dollars, you need it quickly. We want to be able through the Education Equity Fund to meet that need. And last but not least, I thought it was just worth the mention, you all know, Superintendent Johnson meets with her peers across the country in varying districts that are like ours. Other district colleagues do the same thing. I thought I would mention that I am now part of a group, there are 12 of us, who are CEOs of similarly structured education funds. It's everybody from Seattle, we've got Philly, we have Baltimore, we have Chicago, we have St. Louis. These are large, complex urban districts with foundation leadership trying to come alongside of the district. And so just wanted you all to know that we are participating in that. It's been a great resource for steering ideas and best practices. I probably have been remiss in one bullet point, which is we are still a small and mighty team of two. Kelly is in the back doing all this work with the exact same staff that we started with. So bullet point number five will be that as we enter the next year, we will be making an investment in expanding our staff, which is also very exciting. So that is what I had to share with you tonight and I would welcome any questions.
Stephanie, thank you and Kelly as well. Thank you for that presentation. Any questions for Stephanie? I see Commissioner Arnold's hand right up. First one.
I just want to say as the board liaison to the IPS Foundation, I'm very proud to be part of that. Not that I do a lot, but I can tell you in my time on this board, I have never seen the energy and the positive elevation of our district among funders. And that wouldn't have happened without the leadership of Stephanie. Also very much appreciate the relationship between the district administration and the foundation, that nothing ever happens in the foundation, that there is not conversation about, you know, what is needed most and how does it work? And although they have been busy raising millions of dollars for the district, I very much appreciate that one of the things they do is they give small grants out to teachers. And it may not sound like a lot, and I think they can ask for like up to 5,000.
About 1,000.
And that doesn't sound like a lot, but when we're talking about teachers and respecting and honoring our teachers, the fact that they can ask sometimes just remarkable things that they're asking for their classrooms or for their students. And so, you know, on this hand, we have lots and lots of money, which is important to do big stuff. It's also important that we value our teachers and hear their, their concerns and are able to, to help them out in certain situations. So I'm very proud to be a member of the team. You're doing a great job.
Thank you and we appreciate your service.
Thank you, Commissioner Arnold. Commissioner Slatt.
Oh Lord, let me take off the mask, sorry. First of all, I want to say thank you Stephanie for all the work that you're doing. I did have two minor questions.
Sure.
I did see that on slide five, that you're going, walking along the plan for the strategic plan and I appreciate that. I wanted to know what we decide to do for the step one for the rigorous instruction. I see that we're talking about professional development for e-learning, but considering that e-learning is going to be a technology we're going to be continuing to use, is that professional development going to be ongoing as well?
Sure, thank you for the question. So just to clarify, those are examples of funding that have already, have already been given. So that specific professional development was a need that came up to train the K-2 teachers when they transitioned to iPads. So it was Apple training. Certainly we would look to our district colleagues as they're working through the plan. And then we've been talking about revenue mapping and taking a look at where the different revenue streams are that are going to pay for the different initiatives. So we'll step in and do work in whatever initiative they come to us and say, hey, we really want to do this. It's part of achieving the plan. We have these things covered through other revenue sources, but we really could use outside philanthropic commitment. Thank you.
And that learning will continue, that training and development for teachers.
Good, good, because I think that is very needed. Number two, last question for you, is on slide seven, I've seen that we were having a decrease over the years in our funding. Do we have initiatives already started this next year? Because I know it looks like maybe the next two years, then we have significant drop. So we do have things in the pipeline that we're working on?
Sure, yes, thank you for asking that question. So to clarify and also to give a little bit of context, so if I were to show you the historical numbers, last year we contributed 1.8 million to the district. So the 4 million this year is a significant jump and the goal would be that every year we're continuing to increase that, right? What you're seeing with the decrease is only reflective of those projects and initiatives that we already have locked in, just being further out in time, right? So when we get closer to them, we're closer to them, we're a year away as opposed to four years away. I would anticipate, as the needs are relayed, as we go out in the community and raise the dollars, those amounts will go up.
Thank you, Stephanie. I really appreciate it.
That's just the guaranteed number. I plan on bringing you bigger numbers.
Oh, no, we might hear from you in the future, trust me.
Anything else?
All right, Stephanie, thanks so much for the presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie, and thank you, Kelly, for all the work you all do. Mighty team of two. All right, we will move on into old business. There's one item in old business, Item 7.01. Last month, Andrew Burnlor presented the Small Purchases Policy. It's now sat for the requisite 30 days, and the administration requests the board's approval of that policy. Andrew, if you want to give a quick overview of what it is, then we can ask for action.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. So the policy or the resolution in front of you essentially is to adopt small purchases policy. Again, a small purchases policy is required under Indiana statute, and it really comprises what we've been doing here at IPS. We just need to memorialize it by adopting a policy, and that's what you're going to be asked to do this evening.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent Johnson, and thank you, Mr. Burnlor. Are there any questions or comments regarding the proposed policy resolution from commissioners? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve the resolution as presented. In doing so, we will adopt the proposed small purchase policy.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion. A second. Any further discussion? All right. Mr. Burnlor, please call the roll.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Arnold?
Yes.
Commissioner Pritchard?
Yes.
Commissioner Slack?
Yes.
Secretary Collins?
Yes.
Vice President Moore?
Yes.
President Hawkins?
Yes. Motion carries. The policy is adopted. Thank you both.
Thank you. There are four items in new business. Item 8.01 was presented on Tuesday evening. It is the administration's recommendation regarding multiple shifts in our transportation structures beginning next year. Given the significance of this transition and recommendation, I'll ask Zach Mahal and our Executive Director of Operations to present an overview of the presentation that was provided on Tuesday prior to our formal request of approval.
Thank you, Superintendent Johnson. Good evening, Board Commissioners. Before I get started, I want to say it's good to see you all on stage there. It looks really crowded based on our... So it's good to see you all back and great to have, finally have public speakers back here. So particularly was refreshing to hear from some of our students, Elad and Lucille from School 70. So it's always great to have them in the room and hear from them, especially on a school night, come out and spend some time with us. So I just wanted to make a note of that. What, again, we've spoke on Tuesday evening and reviewed this this presentation. So what we'll probably do is kind of give some highlights of that. I won't go through every slide, but I do want to hit the highlights, particularly for anyone who's here or anybody who's tuning in, so they have an opportunity to review some of the recommendations and hear from some of the context. So I also want to point to anybody who's tuned in that all of this information is on Board Docs. You'll see all of the presentation materials posted on Board Docs, and lots of information on our transportation webpage. So if you go to the IPS, www.myips.org, look at the Students and Families tab, and then go to Transportation. Lots of great information about Indigo, about walk zones, about ridership materials, and so lots of information there. Kind of a one-stop shop for transportation information. So what I'd like to do this evening is review some of the context and groundness in some of the strategic plan work that we've discussed this evening, review some of the recommendations, updates on those, talk a little bit about some of the community engagement that we've done to date, and then review some next steps. So I think it's important, we've talked a little bit this evening about the strategic plan that was adopted in 2020, that 2025 strategic plan talked about some of those strategic priorities. So most importantly of those four strategic priorities is strategic priority four, which is to operate and fund strategically, and specifically that Initiative 4.5, which is about implementing cost reductions, revenue generation strategies, and key departments that increase the district's financial sustainability and readiness to invest resources in strategic and instructional priorities. So again, grounding this work tonight, some of these transportation recommendations in that strategic priority four. We've seen, this is the second time you've seen this slide tonight. This was part of Weston's Quarterly Finance Update, and not the first time you've all seen this. But I think it's important to ground not only this, the recommendations and the work that we're doing with transportation planning in our strategic priorities, but also within the financial and budgetary context that we're thinking about. And so as Weston outlined, as the superintendent has noted on a number of times, we have some difficult decisions to make with respect to our budget. And again, the slide illustrates and grounds us in, the sooner that we make those decisions, the longer we can push out and avoid any drastic decisions that we'd have to make in the future. So we're trying to think strategically about how we can make those decisions early and make those compounding impact of those savings so that we can ensure financial sustainability going forward. And the superintendent has said, just because strategic doesn't mean easy. So just because we're being thoughtful and intentional and trying to move early and deliberately on this doesn't mean the decisions that we're recommending will be easy. So but I think it's important to ground us in that in that financial context. Again, as we discussed, about a third of our structural deficit is planned around cost reductions identified within transportation. And so we've known for a number of years that IPS runs a high-cost transportation service. And so we've known there's lots of opportunity there to think about how we can continue to provide high degree of service, but do so in a way that's conscious of the structural deficit and the need to reduce costs. And so dating back to 2015, we've already reduced our transportation spend by about 15% through a number of initiatives that allowed us to consolidate some of our routes, reduce our bus fleet, and increase the fuel efficiency and reduce maintenance cost. So looking specifically at the recommendations that the team is making for the 2122 school year, it really comes into three initiatives: a shift of some of our students onto the Indigo Transit Network, so a small number of our high school students utilizing the Indigo Transit Network; a continuation of our walk zone implementation that began last year; and finally, some route optimization that we've done with our first student partners to redesign routes, think about better pairing of our routes, and do some stop consolidation work. And so picking up some of the work that was delayed last year as we managed some of the COVID crisis. We won't specifically discuss that this evening, but that work is ongoing, and I'm pleased with the progress we've made on that and the opportunity to identify savings there. As you'll note, the only action that's required from you this evening is to approve an amendment to our existing transportation policy, Board Policy 8600, that authorizes the administration to engage with Indigo for a transportation services for a number of our high school students. So the walk zone implementation is aligned to longstanding board policy. And again, that route optimization is some of our routine annual work that we do with respective transportation services. Reviewing the Indigo recommendations, we've been engaged with Indigo the last two and a half years for a transportation transit pilot program. So dating back to 2018, a small pilot, and then continuing through the 1920 school year and the current 2021 school year, we've issued Indigo passes to all of our IPS high school students, so they've had the opportunity to utilize the Indigo Transit Network, both for their daily commute to and from school, but also on the evenings, breaks, holidays, and so forth. So we've been really pleased with not only the feedback we've gotten from students, families, and schools about that, but also confident in the data that we've gotten from that to really explore what that might look like as we think about transitioning some of those students onto Indigo for next year. And so based on that data, based on the feedback and the work that our team has looked at, we've identified criteria that we feel confident those students can be served safely and reliably on the Indigo Transit Network. So those criteria are students that can utilize Indigo for a total journey time of less than 50 minutes, less than a .7 mile total walk to stop and stop to school, and then those who can utilize Indigo with no transfers, so it can get on in their origination stop and destination stop with no transfers. And so we believe there are about 600 students, based on our analysis, that can transition off of the IPS Yellow Buses and onto the Indigo Transit Network next school year. Important to note that based on this analysis, 90% of those students will have a shorter total journey time utilizing the Indigo Transit Network than they do currently through the Yellow Bus assignment. I think it's important to note on the Indigo recommendation, so we're recommending those 600 students that meet those criteria be shifted onto Indigo Network in the coming school year, so they will receive, continue to receive the universal Indigo Transit Pass in lieu of a Yellow Bus assignment. And we've also heard from many students who have come to rely on Indigo and appreciate the enhanced mobility benefits of that partnership, that they want to continue riding the Indigo Network. And so for any student or family who wants to continue to utilize the Indigo Network but isn't included in that 600 students that we've identified for transition next year, they can opt in and continue to utilize that pass as they have the last two years through an opt-in process. We've heard lots of feedback from families, students, schools about this, about the recommendations, and about the Indigo partnership. And as you might expect, we've heard lots of concerns about safety both on the bus and at Indigo stops. And so we appreciate that feedback and have been working to think about how we can make sure that students feel comfortable, confident, safe utilizing the Indigo Network. And the one data point that I point to, and you all heard me say it, which is, over the last two and a half years, we've had 150,000 unique rides of IPS students on the Indigo Network. And so while this will be a shift, this will be a new step in the relationship with Indigo, this isn't a new partnership. This is a continuation, sort of the next step in that evolution of that relationship with Indigo. And for many of our students, this will be not a significant change. We have many students who are utilizing the Indigo Pass with a high level of frequency. And so I want to note that while obviously safety is the first priority for us, we're confident that we can shift some of those students onto Indigo and safely and reliably allow them to use transportation. With respect to some of the Indigo stops, I, you know, while it's true that there are lots of different characteristics across the city with respect to infrastructure and safety, and those concerns are real, and we continue to think about how we can make sure that we're keeping students safe, it's also important to note, we don't assign Indigo stops. And so for a student who might be concerned about a particular Indigo stop in and around their residence, often there's multiple stops that they can utilize to access the Indigo Network. And then with respect to some of those high-volume stops in and around our high schools, that those destination stops that students will arrive at in the morning or board the bus in the afternoon, we'll have some IPS police presence there in the mornings and afternoons to ensure student safety and have a patrol presence in the area. With respect to the walk zones, as I indicated, there's no action requested at this time with our walk zones. The current board policy dates back to the 1990s that establishes those prescribed walk boundaries. And so we're not requesting any change to the existing policy with respect to those prescribed boundaries. So what we're doing is just continuing the implementation of those walk boundaries as approved in board policy. And so using a shift in strategy with respect to crossing guards to ensure that we're deploying crossing guards and shifting some of those students that are currently getting a Yellow Bus assignment but are living within those prescribed walk boundaries and providing crossing guards just to shift a number of those students. So again, this is also not a new change for IPS. We've had walkers in the district going back to the 1990s. We have about 4,000 students who are walkers for the current school year. And so we're expecting the continued implementation of those walk boundaries to shift an additional 2,000 or so students beginning next year from Yellow Buses and into walker designation. We've done a number of significant family, community outreach efforts. And so we've sent communications out to impacted families. So for high school students that would be impacted by the Indigo implementation, and for students that are impacted in the walk zone implementation, make sure that they are aware of those recommendations and plans. We've had a number of town halls on transportation recommendations, so we could get feedback from both impacted families or other concerned stakeholders. We've established on the website lots of feedback forms, so both for walk zones and Indigo feedback forms, and opportunities for families to reach out with questions, concerns, and feedback to make sure that we're listening, hearing those concerns, and incorporating those into our planning process. And so have lots of calls and outreach to families, both at the spite from the school and from the district, to make sure parents, families are aware of the recommendation and changes, and make sure that we're giving them an opportunity to ask questions, provide feedback, and identify concerns. Developing Student Ambassador Program so that we can have students at each of our schools that will serve as student ambassadors for their school, for the Indigo Partnership. It's one thing for the district or for the school leaders to talk about Indigo with students, but I think it means a lot more when you have a peer there to walk through the process and describe their experience and be an advocate for the program. So I expect to be talking to Elad pretty soon about being a student ambassador at Shortridge High School, so he can expect that call at school night. And again, I would note with respect to some of the walk zone shifts last year, as I said, we, for some families, this will be a shift for next year. We realize that, and there's anxiety about that shift and questions and concerns. But I would note, again, we have over 4,000 walkers for the current school year, and have both learned from that, the experience last year, and are continuing to build on what those school-level supports look like to make sure that families who may be doing that for the first time, or some of those current walkers, have the information and coordination and supports needed to make sure that we're doing that in a really intentional way that prioritizes student safety. So thinking about some of those opportunities to connect families and schools for carpooling and some walking school bus programs to ensure that families are connected, and we're incorporating some of those supports into the implementation for the fall. Also, continue to work with the city. I think it's important to think about, both for Indigo and for the walk zone, about how IPS as an organization can engage with our partners in the city, neighborhood associations, community partners, to think more broadly about how we're supporting students and families, not only during their commutes to school, but also as they live, work, and play in their neighborhoods, thinking about how IPS can be a partner and plug into some of the ongoing efforts with the city and other partners about thinking about walkability, bikeability, livable neighborhoods, and identifying barriers and limitations to that. So working with the city to identify gaps in infrastructure or roadscape that are barriers for some of our students and families, and then plugging into some of the great efforts some neighborhoods and community organizations are doing with both education and programmatic supports for walkable communities. So really want to make sure that we're not only thinking about how we implement this in the fall, but how IPS can be a great community partner in some of the broader community work. So looking at the timeline, we're right there in the middle, April 29. So tonight, we're bringing to you our formal request. You'll see on Board Docs, there's a resolution to approve an amendment to Board Policy 8600. So primarily, that change is, again, to authorize the issuance of Indigo passes for selected high school students who meet those criteria. And one other change there, which is just clarifying with respect to our walk zone implementation, that K-8 schools are treated in a manner consistent with our elementary school walk boundaries. And so those are the two changes to that policy we're bringing to you this evening. After tonight, we will continue to build on through the end of the school year, some of those detailed implementation plans. So more information about crossing guard locations, walking school bus programs, some of the training sessions that we'll plan for Indigo. So we know that that first day of high school in the fall is always a source of anxiety, and we want to make sure that that Indigo ridership experience isn't one of those things to be anxious about. So planning some information sessions at each of the high schools, so impacted families are aware of what that ridership experience is like, and also some of the enhanced benefits that, again, Elad spoke to this evening, but some of the benefits of the Indigo Partnership, and then building out some of those plans this summer so that we can assure that students who are maybe transitioning to Indigo or maybe walkers in the fall, that students who are maybe transitioning to Indigo or maybe walkers in the fall, that they, they are, they are ready to go prior to that first day of school and they know what their route to school looks like, their morning plans look like, so that we can make sure that we implement and execute on this well, well in the fall. And so I will, I will pause here. I know that was, that was quicker than, than Tuesday and we didn't stop at every slide. Again, for anybody tuning in, all of the slides are on board docs, lots of information on our transportation homepage. So, but happy to take any questions at this time.
Zach, thank you for the presentation again, and we'll open the floor up to questions from Commissioners for Zach. Okay, no questions. So I will remind Commissioners that policy shifts were posted on board docs in the month of March, and so that does allow us to take action this evening. So, so being that there are no questions or comments, do we have a motion to approve the resolution? Oh, I'm sorry, Christian Moore, my apologies.
Mic stop. Okay, again Zach, I want to thank you for the hard work that you have done on this proposal. One of the, one of our speakers suggested that we, as Commissioners, take an opportunity to take the ride and see what our individual students felt like and what they would be going through. When we first did the, the pilot, we all took an opportunity to ride downtown, as Commissioners, to the downtown hub. I would like to suggest that we take this opportunity, because I know that you had indicated one time early on that you, we were going to have like bus rides for parents and families. I think that the Commissioners, we should consider, the Commissioners should consider taking a bus ride not from downtown, but from our own homes, our areas, from our district to either I, to Tech, Shortridge, one of the schools, so that we can really get an opportunity to understand what our children are going through. And I, and I appreciate the fact that you have heard what each and every family member has been saying and that we continue to adapt and modify, and I know we will continue to do so. But I do think that, I mean, I heard her and, and I agree with her. So I would like to get one of those passes, so I can ride from 46 in Arlington to Tech High School one day, whenever the, the, the family rides and stuff are occurring. And I encourage you guys to do the same. Thank you.
Absolutely. Happy to do that.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Slack?
Are we just doing questions at this time? Are we going to make, are we actually going to have comment after we vote?
Yeah, great question. So this is the moment for questions and questions, and then once we...
I can hold on.
Okay. All right, thank you both. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented and in doing so, adopting the policy as presented?
No move.
Second.
Right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Commissioner Slack?
I'm feeling my mask, I had two of them, sorry guys. First of all, I want to say thanks Zach for all the work you've done, Mr. Mahone, sorry, for all the work you've done. And Shelby, I think her name is Mrs. Shelby.
Robitier.
Robitier, I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce your name.
Robi Terry.
There we go, thank you.
Got it.
I appreciate the work that you've done around the continuous engagement with our parents. I know that we get a lot of backlash when we're talking about transparency, the fact that we've had town halls, but I would also encourage for us to continue to do these a little bit more and continuously to stay engaged with our parents and give them more than just a month to make a huge decision that we're about to make tonight. I also would like to say that I liked the fact that we may have mentioned that we have some areas that we still have to continuously to engage with our community on, especially when it comes around infrastructure. I understand that we have arrived to this decision and it's going to be a very difficult decision, the $18 million structural deficit that we are facing. Transportation has had a huge impact on the financial sustainability of IPS. However, when comparing ourselves against Denver, Chicago, New York and Washington, we are comparing ourselves against the culture, the infrastructure and the value of public transportation in these areas. That is not the same in Indianapolis. My concerns are the safety, the infrastructure and the burden that IPS may have to bear with the lighting in different areas. We cannot act like we do not know that the priority of, of our, the kids' safety is not our number one concern. We are not denying that. But we also cannot deny that the development in Indianapolis is the same in the center of Indiana that it is on the west and the east side of town. The accessibility to sidewalks and infrastructure and the actual ability to get on the bus is not equal. So with that being said, it's very difficult for, as a parent, to vote yes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Slack. Any further comment, Commissioner Arnold?
I would just like to say that I intend to support the recommendation. I think this is not something that's happened overnight. We've had a long time. There's been a great deal, an enormous amount of research and conversation and options considered. I'm pleased with the continued partnership with Indigo. I think we have reduced, I think originally the plan was maybe for 2,000 high school students or some large amount that has been reduced to 600. I've had parents contact me who are not part of that 600, but excited about the possibility for their children, and some of those are incoming freshmen, to participate in the Indigo option rather than the yellow bus. With the walk zones, I know that's a challenge, but that is a very old policy that for whatever reason this district did not enforce for more than 20 years. So, you know, that's a reality, that's not new. I think, I'm pleased we had the pilot last year. The thing I'm pleased with is that when I raised issues that were brought to my attention about the pilot, about walking conditions or streets, those situations were always looked at and rectified. So I'm very confident that as we move forward, if issues come up with walk zone areas that the Transportation Department and the administration will take those seriously. I know in some cases, crossing guards were added. In some cases, students did receive yellow bus transportation because of McKinney-Vento or other situations. So I, I'm pleased and I, and I'm sure that those concerns will be addressed. So I think moving forward, I think this is also going to bring people out to help with walking. You know, years ago, a lot of students walked. I know it's a different environment today, it's not the same as it was, but I think, I think we read one letter from someone who submitted information that they think this will help neighborhoods, that more people will be out, more people will be walking and supervising and being out on their porch when students are walking by. So, you know, I think it's hard, I think change is hard, like things aren't always easy, but I will vote yes for the recommendation and I believe that it's going to be good ultimately for our students and for our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Arnold. Commissioners, any further discussion? I just want to also acknowledge that I intend to support this, this recommendation and this policy shift, and I do recognize that and appreciate the fact that particularly the prudence that has gone into the scaling and stepping into the Indigo Program and Partnership. And as Commissioner Arnold so eloquently stated, we've been stepping into this partnership for some time and, and have been building our muscle and building our systems and processes around this partnership. And I think we saw, as I mentioned earlier, we saw some, some, some flares and some threats to the Indigo infrastructure over the past few weeks and months, but those, those have, have subsided for the moment. But I think in general, you know, I think the takeaway here is, is that, again, I'll point to this timeline on the screen here, and this is something I flagged last Tuesday, is, is that the months of May, June, July and August are going to be incredibly critical for not only the, our community, but also just engaging and communicating over and over and over again. That communities know and families know and parents know and schools know where to go, who to call, when, where and how. And so that's just going to be incredibly important. One, one other comment I would make is, is related to Commissioner Slack's comment about infrastructure and, and that is, that is real. And so I know that in the last presentation, Zach, you talked about how there has been an intentional engagement with the, with DPW and the city, particularly to, to really shine a light on areas where infrastructure is lacking. And so one thing that I would love to see is that tracking or list, because we all live in districts across the city of Indianapolis, and I think frankly, we have relationships, we have community partners that we can leverage, particularly when there is a light out or there is a sidewalk that doesn't exist or is crumbling, or there are issues infrastructure-wise. So I think as, I, I would imagine my colleagues on the board would concur, to have that information, it would be very important so that we can leverage that and advocate and mobilize in order to, to respond to those infrastructure issues, because certainly we do have some, some infrastructure improvements or enhancements that are necessary in Indianapolis. So I would greatly appreciate that. Okay. With that being said, no further discussion. Mr. Burnler, please call the roll.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Arnold?
Yes.
Commissioner Pritchard?
Yes.
Commissioner Slack?
No.
Secretary Collins?
Yes.
Vice President Moore?
Yes.
President Hawkins?
Yes. Motion carries and the resolution is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Burnler.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item in new business is item 8.02, which is an innovation agreement that we are recommending to move forward in partnership with Hope Academy. Jamie Vandewaal, our Chief Portfolio Officer and members of the Hope Academy Leadership Team presented to this board on Tuesday evening, and at this time, the administration requests the board's approval of the agreement as presented.
Thank you, Superintendent Johnson. Are there any questions or comments regarding the proposed resolution? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
No.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, Commissioners? Commissioner Arnold?
I just want to explain my vote that I will be voting to support this recommendation. I think when I look at this, this is to me exactly what the innovation school models are all about. This is a very specific school for students that have issues with addictions. I, I think we have students in our current district that will benefit from this school as an option. I'm not concerned that students come from out of the different counties to participate. We have students that come out of the county to attend Attix and Heron and other schools that we have. So to me, that's not unusual or a deal breaker, but I do appreciate that this is a very different model. This is something that I think will be useful to our students. I think the school is looking at how to better serve a more diverse population and clearly we can help in that regards. So I will be supporting the recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner Arnold. Commissioner Slack, please.
I appreciate the Hope Academy and I also appreciate their mission. However, I don't see her, their mission being any different throughout being, making it a program throughout IPS, especially in our own high schools. We all have our own high schools, have their own pathways, working long beside our high schools, I see no different. So I would not be able to support this decision tonight because I could see this as a program and not a school. And I see this as a ongoing problem for me for looking at innovations. I see all them as being a lot of more programs that can be implemented within IPS as a partnership, but not as an individual school. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Slack, for your comments. Any further discussion, Commissioners? Hearing none, Mr. Burnler, please call the roll.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Arnold?
Yes.
Commissioner Pritchard?
Yes.
Commissioner Slack?
No.
Secretary Collins?
Yes.
Vice President Moore?
Yes.
President Hawkins?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Burnler.
Thank you. The next item, item 8.03 is a bond reimbursement resolution. Weston Young, our CFO, presented an overview of the purpose of that resolution on Tuesday evening. Essentially, it will give us the opportunity to reimburse ourselves if we issue debt up to a specific amount, and the administration requests the board's approval at this time.
All right, thank you, Superintendent Johnson, for that update regarding the bond resolution, reimbursement resolution. Are there any questions or comments regarding the proposed resolution? Hearing none, we have a motion, do I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
No move.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Burnler, please call the roll.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Arnold?
Yes.
Commissioner Pritchard?
Yes.
Commissioner Slack?
Yes.
Secretary Collins?
Yes.
Vice President Moore?
Yes.
President Hawkins?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Burnler. Motion carries. Resolution is approved.
Our final item, item 8.04, was an overview of architect and engineer contracts that was presented by Scott Martin, Chief Operations Officer, on Tuesday to begin work on two specific projects related to our facilities. The administration requests the board's approval of this item as presented.
Thank you again, Superintendent Johnson. Are there any questions or comments regarding the architectural and engineering contract? Commissioner Moore, Commissioner Slack, my apologies.
I don't have any questions. I do have a statement, though. I am very proud that we are enlisting more black-owned businesses and for that slide number four, and that we're boosting up our equality on that level. So kudos, thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Commissioner Slack. Do I have a motion to approve the architectural and engineering contract as presented?
No move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Burnler, please call the roll.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Arnold?
Yes.
Commissioner Pritchard?
Yes.
Commissioner Slack?
Yes.
Secretary Collins?
Yes.
Vice President Moore?
Mr. Stain.
President Hawkins?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Burnler. Motion carries. Contracts are approved. Moving on to section nine, closing comments. Mr. Burnler, do we have, I'm sorry, Commissioners, do we have any Commissioners that would like to offer any closing comments this evening?
Yes, I would.
Commissioner Moore.
Okay. Whereas Misty Roseman served as, served the Indianapolis Public School for 16 years as a teacher and two and one-half year as an administrator, whereas her years of service contributed positively and significantly to the Indianapolis Public School students. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of School Commissioners of the City of Indianapolis that the death of Misty Roseman be memorialized and that a copy of this memorial be sent to, to the members of her family. Misty worked as an English language teacher at Arlington High School for nine years, as an English language art teacher at John Marshall Middle High School for six years, an English language art teacher and instructional coach at Arsenal Tech High School for one year, and as an assistant principal at Arlington Middle School for two and one-half years. Misty was respected by the students and staff at Arlington Middle, at Arlington Middle School for her thoughtfulness and devotion for their well-being. Her peers and supervisors respected her dedication to duty. She will be greatly missed by all her past and present students and staff members at Arlington Middle School.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Slack?
Memorial to Todd West, whereas Todd West, sorry, Todd J. West, served the Indianapolis Public Schools for 30 years and six months, whereas his service and contribution positively and significantly to the Indianapolis Public School students and staff. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of School Commissioners of the City of Indianapolis that the death of Todd West be memorialized and that the copy of this memorial be sent to his members of his family. Todd West began his career in 1990 as an elementary teacher in various IPS schools for multiple grade levels. Since 1997, he taught at Ernie Pearlau School, School 90, and served a fifth, as a fifth grade teacher and a team leader for most of the time he was there. His, in addition to his contribution, he was a basketball coach and school transportation coordinator. Todd West was respectfully, respected by the staff at Ernie Pearlau School 90 for the high expectations he had for his students. His peers and his supervisors respected his dedication to his students, staff and family members of Ernie Pearlau. Todd enjoyed golf, basketball, football, baseball, Star Wars and reading. He loved posting scriptures and inspirational quotes on Facebook, but most of all, he loved spending time with his wife and family. He will be greatly missed by the staff members of Indianapolis Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Slack. Any other closing comments, Commissioners?
I do, I'm sorry. I do, I'm sorry. I know, I need to shut up today, but I can't.
Commissioner Moore?
Thank you. I want to take this opportunity to salute Scott for all the hard work he did with the transportation contract that we entered into over a year ago. As many of you may remember, we were trying to determine the best way to best utilize our funds, ensure that we maintain funds within the classrooms, also ensuring that we were able to honor and respect those individuals that worked for us and drove our buses and brought our children back and forth to school. You also may have remembered that we received a lot of individuals who did not believe that the things that we were saying was true, that we were looking to save funds by all means, that we were intending to ensure that we gave our students a better and quality ride and quality buses, and that we would ensure that our drivers had more funds available to them and their families by increasing their salary rates, and by also by not breaking up their union. Many thought that we were attempting to break up a union for our drivers, and it has been determined that as of this day, that the union and the first students, am I saying it right, first students have entered into a contract, and all those things that we voted for last year came true. So Scott, I salute you and your staff for all the work that you did to ensure that that happened. Thank you very much.
I'm going to wait for one more moment, Commissioner Moore. Are you...
I'm done for today. I'm done for today.
The microphone is turned off. Thank you, though, for those remarks very much. Commissioner Allen?
Thank you, President Hawkins. I just want to pause and express my gratitude to the parents and to the students that came here, public testimony, and even submitted comments electronically. We do read those, and we do appreciate them.
All right, Commissioners, I will just read a brief comment here in closing. Board members, and similar to Commissioner Allen's comments, board members have received numerous emails and letters advocating for equity across the IPS family. I know that this board feels very fortunate to be in partnership with a committed parent community that is focused on student achievement across all demographics, and especially on behalf of Black and Brown children. In addition, I want to thank the parents that presented this evening from the Stanford Children Parent Committee for the creation of the parent vision for a more just and equitable IPS, which serves as a direct call to action for this board and for our community. We see what you are seeing, and we're committed to eliminating disparities within IPS and recognizing the same level of urgency that we're hearing in your letters. The board is fully committed to creating an actual and demonstrable gains as defined by the 25 strategic plan. Principally, we are committed to increasing access to rigorous curriculum, promoting racial equity, fostering authentic engagement, and operating and funding strategically. We're hearing your call that decisions with respect to these priorities are intentionally made through an equity-focused lens, and this is exactly what we, this board, are committed to. So again, I want to thank the parent committee, and frankly, all parents across IPS, because it isn't just the parent committee through Stanford Children that have been advocating and demanding that school systems like IPS around the country are laser-focused on this equity work. So again, I want to thank our entire IPS parent community for your commitment, steadfast support, and commitment for this work. That being said, I will conclude, Commissioner comments, and pass to you, Superintendent Johnson.
Thank you, President Hawkins. First, I want to again acknowledge that with the board's approval of today's transportation recommendations, we know that our work does not end. It is just moving into the next phase. We are committed to the continued engagement and support of our families to ensure a transition that is smooth, as we're able to make it at the start of the next school year. We are heading into the last six weeks of the school year, which is incredible considering all we've navigated this year, and we want to ensure that we finish strong, and that is the theme we've adopted across our schools in the fourth quarter. Each school has identified goals specific to the fourth quarter that they are working to achieve, so that we finish strong and set a solid foundation as we prepare for next school year. To that end, over 100 central services team members, along with school space liaisons, visited over 400 homes a couple of weeks ago across the district to check in with our students and families and be sure they had everything they needed to finish the school year on a high note. A very big thank you to Shatina Love, our Executive Director of Secondary Schools, for leading that effort, with lots of support from Dietra Taylor, our Transportation Director, Courtney Flukas, our Unified Student Supports Officer, and Abby McCafferty, and Kimberly Miranda, who served as executive assistant and provided lots of support as well. Very appreciative of those efforts, and it was an excellent two days to be out in our community, talking with our families. Next week, we will also celebrate another very special group of people, our teachers. Next week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and so I'd invite the community to join with us in honoring our teachers who've navigated such an incredibly hard year this year. I'm not sure that there are enough thank yous to say to adequately convey our gratitude, but we will do our best next week to say that a lot to them. Finally, as Commissioner Arnold also recognized, I want to recognize the tragedy that April brought to our district. We lost a member of our IPS community, Carly Smith, who was killed in the FedEx shooting that occurred on April 15th. We also lost Amarjeet Johal, who had been a big supporter of our newcomers program and had often provided support for our newcomer families. We grieve with their families, and we will continue to honor their memories. We had other families impacted in ways by this tragedy as well, and we will continue to keep them in our thoughts and provide supports in the ways that we can. I was honored to meet Carly's mom over the past weekend, and I'm so proud of how her children's school communities have really wrapped themselves around her and her family to be supportive during this time. So may we all commit ourselves to actions and ways of being that keep us from having to experience such violence and tragedy moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Johnson. Our next scheduled meeting is our work session on Tuesday, May 18, 2021, at Matchbox Learning, Wenda Phillips School 63. Having completed all the items on this agenda, this meeting now stands adjourned.